Board of Education Committee meeting for Wednesday, March twenty second, two thousand twenty three to order with roll call. Jan?
Here.
Brooke?
Here.
Kaisha?
Here.
Jeff? Wyatt? Emma?
Here.
And myself is here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is item on the agenda elementary school future plans in consideration?
From the last board meeting, we had talked about having a special meeting related just to the elementary school. And one of the items requested from the board was to go back and review the different options that Bray had put together. So Matt Wolford is here from Bray. You should have heard him a number of times over the last year or so. And Matt is going to lead us through both the process of how we came through those and then also the costing that would come from migrant and associates from there. So the first document was presented on June twenty second of two thousand twenty one. And.
Yeah, so I'll give you a high level overview and I believe this document has been shared multiple times now over the past couple of years. But just as a little bit of context in history, the process really began in, let's say, late summer of two thousand twenty with a specific focus on elementary school. That doesn't include the process that Bob mentioned multiple times in prior meetings that looked even further back in history where the elementary school is a focus of large conversations and community conversations regarding kindergarten, finding a long-term plan. But the first half in that April, this is going to get confusing because if you remember, I gave these, we had meetings on the exact same day, June sixth in two thousand twenty one. Sorry, June twenty second, twenty one, two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two. So if you're referencing the document, make sure you use the year because they're exactly the same for some reason. So the two thousand twenty one document is the, is the lengthy book. It's the book that's up on your screen. It was a work session that we held where we really went through the timeline that started back in summer of two thousand twenty. Looked at how we got to where we did in terms of focusing on the elementary school, which was full facility condition assessment. So engineered our architectural staff toured the building, identified challenges that the building faced, many of which are just due to age. Not a lack, not, no, not a lack of care or attention, but just age. Things we normally would see in school buildings, nothing unusual at all from our perspective. And most schools of the vintage that you have have either had a major upgrade since they were built or are facing the same challenges you're facing. So again, just for context, don't look at it and say it hasn't been cared for. That isn't the case. It's just as aged and that's very normal, as I've said, for many school buildings of that age. We did staff listening sessions and staff survey during that window of the two thousand twenty, early two thousand twenty one timeframe. So we sent the survey to staff members. We held staff listening sessions, getting into the schools to learn a little bit more about what was working well, what maybe wasn't working. Make sure we're getting the voice and the thoughts of those that are in the building every day. And then spent a great deal of time both behind the scenes with the leadership team, but also with the board and different iterations of the board. Obviously, different members of the board have been involved in that over the period of time of late two thousand twenty through early two thousand twenty one. Where really we were exploring all the options that are included in the book. The main focus you'll see within the document that you have up on the screen, the June of two thousand twenty one document, were mainly focused on K five and some K eight solutions, but the majority of the middle school needs were focused on the secure entry. So just sort of thinking back, that has been addressed now. And so even though those documents are included in the document, both in board books, but also that if you have a printed copy in front of you, anything at the middle school that was specific to the security, that's been handled so that we can kind of move to the side of not being needed anymore. All the options when we look at the middle school were really about adding capacity. That was not capacity for six through eight grade students, but if a grade level was to be moved there. So the board at that time had a number of thoughts and ideas around, do we build new, do we add on? Do we change grade configurations? If we change grade configurations, how does that affect both the intermediate school? And then obviously, if we push a grade up, how does that affect the middle school? So that document, and I'm happy to go through as much or as little, I don't know, other board members, if you, everybody generally familiar with these options? Do we want, you want me to kind of walk through each of them at a high level?
Um, probably walk through each of them because I, the two new board members here.
Okay.
Can I ask some clarifying questions, first? When you did tour the building, are you talking, you toured just the elementary school or you toured all buildings?
We met with leadership at all buildings, but our tour was specific to the elementary school. So when we were brought on board, the specific charge was a full facility condition assessment of just the elementary school. Basically because the district had a good grasp and Bob still has a very good grasp of what the needs were from that infrastructure ADA lens at the intermediate middle and high school. So that wa, that was the reason for the specificity, it was just the elementary school. And that full facility assessment, I can't, I don't recall the specific dates in which we delivered that to the board. The document itself is dated in January twenty first of two thousand twenty one. But that is a document that we looked at in, in brief form with the board at the June twenty second, two thousand twenty two board meeting, if I remember correctly. It was before, but I believe we did come back with it a second time, just for the benefit of the new board members in June of two thousand twenty two. Does that help? Do I have any other questions to add?
No.
Alright, so I will work from kind of the option summary chart and if you have. Basically what we did is we have the two thousand twenty one version of it, which had cost or budgets, I should say, that would have been based on a process whereby we would have considered a referendum in, let me look back at my timeline here, April of two thousand twenty two, if I remember correctly. So the June two thousand twenty one budgets that you see would have been based on a April two thousand twenty two. The June two thousand twenty two document that you have looks very similar. The real difference between the two is that we removed the middle school secure entry scope and adjusted the budgets within that document to what would have been an April of two thousand twenty three referendum. So that's the difference between the two. I'll use the two thousand twenty one version just because I have it in front of me. But if you have any questions on the two thousand twenty two document, I'm happy to review those as well. So big picture, there was about eight different options that were explored at that time. I'll say six main options in terms of grade configurations with two sub-variables to a couple of those options, but there were ages in total. Option one was a scenario where the existing elementary school would have served early childhood and four-year-old kindergarten. That would have involved demolishing in, the older section of the school and remodeling the remaining. We would not have had as large a footprint left, but we would have only been serving two grades there. We would have been taking advantage of the newer, generally the newer sections of the school to do that. In option one, there would have been a new kindergarten from five K through second grade building. And the intermediate school would have remit, continued to serve through, through fifth grades. Middle school would have continued to serve sixth through eighth grades. So really minor tweak there would have been a four-building solution because we would have kept a piece of the existing elementary school for early childhood and four K. The other thing I'll say is back in two thousand twenty one, whenever we had a new elementary school, we were generally looking at a plan that would have basically been built into the hill behind the school, up on top of the hill, but it would have been a lockout basement style. Would have had some shared bus drop-off pickup components to it. Fast forward that year later, that's when we were back in this room looking at a scenario where they're going to build a new school across the road. So still the same grade configurations, generally the same size. It was just two different places and two different designs. Doesn't really affect the overall option organization, but just remember, if you're thinking about, or if you remember seeing different options for the new building, that's really the difference is whether it was early in the process, it was more built into the hill. Later in the process, that same concept of a new school was shifted across the road. Option two is, was the existing elementary school would have had a major addition renovation to create. What we were referring to there is a like-new elementary school. So the, almost every square foot of the building would have been touched, remodeled, improved, we had a new mechanical system, major site improvements. But that's, the current school would have served early childhood through second grade. Intermediate would stay as third and fifth, and the middle school would remain sixth, eighth. So that's basically our, you know, stay as we are today, basically, option. Was option two. Option three was the, a new early childhood through second grade school. So again, this is a scenario that the base conversations would be either a new building in the hill or across the street. The existing elementary school would have been removed, would have gone offline, vacated. There was no definitive plan of exactly what would happen. We were carrying dollars to demolish or raise the building and basically return that to grasp until a buyer could be found or another use could be found for the site. But really, it would not have been serving any educational purposes anymore. So the new school would have been early childhood through second grade. Again, your intermediate, third through fifth, and middle school, sixth through eighth. Again, pretty straightforward so far. Option four would have been a new school for, this is the first time we kind of, I'll say tweak our grade configurations more, in a more complex manner, other than option one where we had our early childhood and four K center. So option four, we would have built a new school for early childhood through first grade. So we're taking a grade out, we were previously talking about early childhood through second grade. Option four would have been a new school for early childhood through first. The intermediate would have become second through fourth. So still three grades, so there's no work proposed as part of that in option four. And the middle school would have become fifth through eighth. So that's the first option whereby fifth grade was explored to be moved up to the middle school. This is the plan that would have had an addition on the back of the school, I would say, to expand the cafeteria and wrap around basically to the classroom wing that currently leads you to the district office. There would have been some additional classrooms added back there to support fifth grade. And then the middle school secure entry, obviously we've discussed that would have been addressed as well, but that has been handled at this point. Option four A, this is kind of the first sub-variable of options. So it's the same grade configuration whereby early childhood through first grade stayed together. But in this case, it would have been keeping them in the current elementary school with an investment. Intermediate would have been second through fourth. Middle school would have been fifth through eighth with that same general scope that I described earlier, a fifth grade coming up cafeteria expansion in addition. Option five is where we would have turned the intermediate school into an early childhood through fourth grade building. So here we're getting to, this is kind of the first time we introduced what, what some at the time referred to as a three-building solution. High school stays high school, middle school, and this option five would have become fifth through eighth grade. And their intermediate school would have had a large addition to it to support our early childhood through fourth grades. So this option five is the first three-building option that was explored back in two thousand twenty one. Option five A, again, a sub-variable of that would have been the existing elementary school, the newer sections staying for district office, early childhood and kids club. The intermediate school would have been the same as option five A with four K through fourth grade at that site. And the middle school would have been fifth through eighth grade. The old, the real difference there is obviously keeping an additional building online for the, the existing elementary for district office, early childhood and kids club. With the district office moving, we would have put two classrooms in there if I remember correctly. And that would have allowed the addition to be slightly smaller while we moved fifth grade up to the middle school level. And then option six is another three-building solution where the existing elementary school will be offline. Intermediate will be early childhood through fifth grade. And then our middle school would remain sixth through eighth grade. So in that option six, really the only investment at this point would have been at the intermediate school to provide space appropriate for all of our students, early childhood through fifth grade, with no work at the middle school. I know that was super quick, but I'm happy to go in deeper into plans or answer any questions you may have about any options.
Matt, can you talk a little bit about like architectural assumptions when you're planning a school, like how many square, what you look at for students, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so square footage per student is one way to, to evaluate, but it's a bit of a risky way because every district does a slightly different approach. So how we approached each of these solutions and we do with all of our clients is we meet with educational leadership, building level leadership, special ed leadership, and we really understand how are you delivering your program? Let's talk about number of classrooms, elementary's are pretty straightforward. Number of classrooms per grade level, right? How many sections or tracks is kind of the, the general terminology? How many sections in the garden through fifth grade do we need to house? How many do we need to house today? We, we think we need to house in the future, making sure we're talking about what the future looks like, whether it's up or down. We have to factor that into the conversation. And so that's a baseline conversations, classrooms per grade level. Special ed, we talk about what programs are we delivering? Is early childhood in the building or not? Is four K not specific to special ed, but is four K going to be housed on this site or with community partners or some combination? Is it all they have there? So a long story short, is it's a series of detailed conversations with district leadership team in partnership with our industry knowledge, having done, let's say, hundreds of elementary schools now, generally what's needed. But those general needs are validated through conversations with building level leadership and district leadership, which did happen in this case as well.
How do you determine like what inappropriate, like a classroom size for square footage is?
Great question. So the, the general rule of thumb is twelve hundred is kind of the starting point for four-year-old kindergarten and kindergarten classrooms. And then ideally nine hundred, no smaller than nine hundred for first grade through fifth. I'll just hit on elementary, middle and high schools are all over the board, science class are different, right? You can imagine all that's very different. That's, but those are the baseline. Minnesota has standards. These, some of their spaces are just quite small by comparison to what we generally see in Wisconsin. Some are actually a little bit larger. So Ohio has standards, Minnesota has standards, Iowa doesn't, Illinois doesn't, Wisconsin doesn't. So it really doesn't become a district level decision outside, but that twelve hundred for our youngest learning and that nine hundred for first through fifth. I, I believe if you ask ten architects in Wisconsin, you'd get something in that ballpark as the generally accepted standard for square footage.
I think we have learned too, that the only requirement for square footage was for the before and after school program. Which has requirements for me.
For child care.
I have child care.
Daycare is not very different standard.
So is that, when you're, when you were doing your planning for your options, was that looked at with our kids club program not required?
Kids club not being daycare, it was not specifically a square footage driven program. It was driven more based on how we would use those rooms, when would they be used? Are they being used during school day, while other classrooms are being used or not? So in, in this case, no, not specific to square footage.
Do you have the known state average of square footage per student?
I don't, I don't think there, that data is not available from what I'm aware of. There are regional averages. I can tell you don't look at Arizona and Florida because they don't have corridors. They, yeah. I, I will generally say that the, the square footage per student gets completely thrown out of whack because with, with two simple things. How many students were, we want to seat in a lunch period, which drives some of our scheduling. So that in and of itself is one big one. And then gym size. As you can imagine, if a district decides they're short on gym space in their community and they build two courts, for example, in an elementary gym versus the one court they may need to run by at during the day, that immediately throws square foot per student out the window as anything that you can factor in. So that's where square foot per student gets to be really hard. And I think you can honestly find, I can show you elementary schools that have probably two hundred and ten square feet per student and I can probably show you elementary schools that have a hundred and seventy square feet per student. And there's nothing right or wrong with either, it's what those districts needed or what their, their boards and leadership decided was right for them.
So we currently have two hundred and sixty seven square feet per student between all four buildings. Do you consider that high?
I couldn't tell you because I've never looked at it as a K twelve. I, I could generally give you a rule of thumb on elementary, middle, high school as standalone square feet per student, but I honestly would never consider square feet per student other than just a gut check and even then, I'll tell you right now, we're doing a new elementary school for a client who set their budget based on square feet per student. And now that we're actually doing space program, so the conversation I had about meeting with staff, laying out quantities, et cetera, having those conversations, they're not even in the ballpark. They're going to have a really hard time because they set their budget based on square feet per student versus actually going through the process of identifying their needs. So not saying, not trying to pull polls on square feet per student, but in my opinion, it's a risky metric to use. Especially when you start getting into some of our high schools and things because that's even a bigger challenge if you have a pool. If you have a field house, if you have an auditorium, if you have a major investment in tech ed and STEM spaces, for example, and the school you compare to doesn't have an auditorium, doesn't have a pool, has half the gym space. It's just not a great metric to use unless you're using something that has the exact same program and the exact same number of students, which you're never going to be able to really figure out from publicly available information.
So your question, were there any square feet up about cost or just what spaces?
No, it was kind of just, it just came up, so I asked a question. It's fair. It's, it's a, normally it's not a security issue.
They're all over the board.
They definitely are.
I just, you're in the business.
Absolutely. Fair question.
Can you bring, what about classrooms per enrollment, what do you see on average?
Usually we're seeing at the younger grades, districts trying to program somewhere around twenty to twenty-two students per classroom at the K one or K two level. And then that may grow to twenty-four-ish, maybe a little higher as we get into the second through fifth. Where that change happens really just depends district to district. Districts that have AGR funding would be a smaller, it used to be called, I can't remember what the AGR acronym is anymore, if anybody remembers. It used to be called SAGE, but it's a funding mechanism, which is fifteen to eighteen students for one educator and there's additional funding provided to, to support that. Then you'll see lower class sizes. So really again, it's not, there's no single answer, it does vary district to district, but those general thresholds, use that and then apply that to the current enrollment and projected enrollment. And then it's just simple math, right? Reversing into two, three, four, five, six classrooms per grade level. And then most districts would also plan, depending on, are they trending up, are they trending down, or are they neutral from an enrollment perspective? We may plan if they're trending down, we may plan a number of classrooms to run the bubble between three and four, for example. We may plan on when they, when they open the, the school, that there is a higher number of students per grade level. And you grow into the building, right? As you grow, you actually reduce your number of students per classroom. Or if we're doing the other way around, if we're a growing district, we would actually start by programming and starting from the smaller twenty students per classroom so that as you grow, you're increasing, increasing class size versus adding a whole section potentially. And then we also typically see, most clients want to build in, depending on their specific circumstances, one to three, what we would call flex classrooms. So it's just a classroom sized space that is designed for, most districts eventually have a bubble that comes through. A lot of kids happen to come in kindergarten and now for the next six years, if we're a K five building, we've got this bubble class that requires five classrooms per grade level instead of four. So instead of squeezing them in, that flex classroom becomes the ability to take on that bubble class as it goes through without shaking up the entire school or really increasing class size. So those are some of the strategies that are generally used when it, when we work and plan on determining number of classrooms.
AGR is a cheap way to have reduction.
Thank you. I, I still won't remember, I might have, but. Great question.
How many students were you, like, when you did these designs, like, were thinking they went out?
We were planning on, let me pull up the space program. And. So the November two thousand twenty two board meeting, the November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two board meeting, we reviewed the space program with, I believe, the board. So this would be for the early childhood through second grade, we were planning on one early childhood classroom, five kindergarten classrooms. So basically five classrooms per grade level, four K through second grade. So if we do the simple math, if we just want to say twenty-five to make the math easy, we would have been figuring a hundred and twenty-five students per grade level. K two. And in most cases, we were, we worked for building in the flexibility that if all day four K did come, that you would have the space to do that. That, that all day four K and funding coming forward, it's kind of been this mythical unicorn, it's coming, it's coming, and it's had to come for the last ten years. So a lot of districts struggle with how do we plan for that, if it ever does come and not have to finish a building and a year later go back and add more space? If that program would come along? So that's another conversation we'll want to have, if there's a solution in mind or if you'd like to consider one, how do we handle four K? But Jan, short answer is roughly a hundred and twenty-five kids per grade level.
Matt, when you build a new elementary for four K kindergarten, are the restrooms, they're accessible by the classrooms that are required by the state code?
Not a requirement. So the state code does require a quantity of fixtures per occupant and the occupant is in one twenty-five per grade level. It's actually a code analysis that has to be done. So we have to provide a certain number of, of plumbing fixtures for both genders across the whole building. They could arguably be all in one big room. Never works that way, right? But you really just for code, you have to meet the quantity requirement. Again, if we're starting from scratch, most districts would want their four K in their kindergarten classrooms to have a single unisex bathroom attached to their classroom. So the students that have emergencies during class aren't going down all the main set of bathrooms unsupervised. They're able to be supervised by their classroom teacher. And then from that point forward, first through fifth, are just using traditional shared restrooms in the vicinity of their classrooms.
But then they're also using hallway areas or like shared spaces, shared learning centers and stuff too.
Yeah, that's probably, probably two of the biggest shifts in, in terms of elementary. One is just the infusion of additional services and supports that are provided to students that were not existent when you, specifically are elementary, but most elementaries were built. Right, we're providing a lot more like than social and special ed, which is great for those students that need access to those services. There were never spaces planned for or designed into most schools for that. So that's probably one of the biggest changes is making sure we have appropriate spaces to support those students in building. And then it's a lot of flexible collaborative learning spaces that are shared by educators. It's not like educator A has access to their own dedicated collaboration space. It would be a shared space that four to eight classrooms would be spilling out onto and sharing and using for all of the breakout work that's done for the work when a paraprofessional or a parent volunteer comes in and is working with students, that they have a place to go. When we're doing just active project-based learning, which is far more common today than it was when we all sat at desks facing chalkboards, most of us. It's just teaching and learning isn't happening that way anymore. And buildings and furniture have to kind of come along and adapt to that. And so that's what that flexible collaborative learning space really is intended to do is provide space for creative educators to break out of a traditional four-wall classroom and allow their students to learn in the manner in which they learn best.
And Matt, was there a move in our drawing?
They were, yes, generally. They probably varied slightly in terms of exact size, but yes, in general, there were carved out collaboration spaces. We typically would not provide that breakout collaboration space for four K and kindergarten. So as you're seeing some of the options, typically because those classrooms are larger, we don't also add an additional breakout space for them. But for first and up, we'll be trying to provide that.
And we had one gym figured, right?
We had one gym figured, correct. We had options that the board reviewed at that, for an add-on, expanding the one court gym to get two. So that was a conversation that, that the prior board had had, as you both remember, three of you remember, on, on multiple occasions. But in general, I think as we got to what felt like the finish line, we were all leaning towards the one court because of the budget constraints.
And I know some schools have utilized flexible space where they have walls that are changeable. That's not included in anything here, correct?
No, not from the perspective of demountable walls. We used to do a lot of them and what we generally have found that the demountable wall in order to be a We used to do a lot of them, and what we generally have found that the demountable wall, in order to be effective acoustically, becomes a lot less flexible than it feels like it's gonna be when you first talk about it. So, A, the acoustical impact of them has historically been a limiting factor. B, it's difficult to give up one or two walls in a classroom that have no power or no data these days, given the influx of technology. If we had two walls in a room that were demountable or flexible, and we had one wall that had marker boards and tack boards, and one wall that had cabinetry, we're really limiting where we have access to power and data. And so that, and then as soon as you start putting power and data in multiple walls, which you can do, they really become not flexible. So, we have explored operable a lot. Operable walls, meaning we can open a wall from a classroom to a collaboration space. If we wanna bring two classrooms together, we can spill out into that collaboration space. And honestly, we're building a lot more with what's called abuse-resistant drywalls, which is more of a heavy-duty drywall product, so that if, five years from now, you wanted there to be a door between these two classrooms, for example, you're not hiring a mason to put in a beam to take the wall down. You could honestly come in probably over a weekend with a skilled carpenter and pop a pair of doors in the drywall wall. So, we're building that flexibility in more through the material selections than the actual wall.
Excellent question. In your opinion, Matt, how many total classrooms would you suggest for seventy-eight sections of students?
What grade levels is that?
K two, twelve.
We don't look at middle schools and high schools by section because of how their schedules work. So, that would be looking more at the schedule they have, is it a block, is it an eight-period day? Is our educators educating kids six and eight periods a day? So, not to overcomplicate, but middle and high schools, we don't look at a section. That's more of a number. Yeah, I couldn't even guess at the middle or high school level, because I've never, in my career, thought about a middle or high school as a section-based program. Do you know roughly how many in your calculations were K five? Just take four K out of it, because that's a half-day program, so that affects section counts too.
We were, when we started looking at the problem, we were, we were.
Then we can include that, well, let's not include it, because usually that number is not indicative of your K, unless it is. But usually, you have less kids in four K. K five would be more similar in terms of tracks. I'm not trying to not ask a question, Jeff, I just wanna give you a correct answer.
Yeah, I understand. I don't have that, but I would have a grade level.
Yeah, and I'm happy to send responses back to Mark too, if you want me to look at that, I'm happy to. What would the target number of students per grade level, just typically where we would, for the elementary level grades, that's where we would start.
Second, our max target for four K is twenty, kindergarten is twenty-one, first grade is twenty-two, and second grade is twenty-two.
And then how many total students would, let's just pick a grade. What do you think our cohort size, our total second-grade class would be?
This one, probably eighty-three. That's projected, that's a projection for the next year.
Okay.
So, that would be then possibly the one oh five, produce whole set? Or, or would people pack it?
That's, that's for next year, she wants the projections for next year.
So, did you use your projections for next year, make stock, or are you saying these classes this year, so it's a whole set? Yeah, so, say a hundred.
Hundred? So, eighty to a hundred kids, we typically would see most districts having the conversation around the minimum of four, but trending towards five, depending on whether we have, whether we're in our lower grades, like I said before, I think maybe our kindergartens or first grades, districts may want around one hundred to trend towards five, if they can afford to. It really is an operating budget, and can we afford it from the operating budget side, if there's space available? If we were programming a new building, and the majority of our grades are eighty-five kids, we would typically see that be a four-section school or a three-section school with quite a few flexible classrooms to accommodate that, knowing the fact that one of every two grades may actually be a four-section. So, I'd say that's a three-to-four-section school. That's what we typically would see for eighty to one hundred kids. Three-to-four classrooms per grade level for kindergarten through fifth grade.
Matt, can you talk a little bit about what the benefits, cost difference, whatever, would be between a two-story school versus a one-story?
Yeah, excellent. So, really, it depends on how large the school gets. So, to be quite upfront, if we don't have a lot of program that can go up the second floor, one story is the way to go. If we were building a kindergarten through fifth-grade school, for example, and we were four classrooms per grade level, we typically would see third, fourth, and fifth grade being considered to be upstairs. Oftentimes, along with a library, maybe sometimes art, and then some special ed, and obviously support spaces for third through fifth grade. Rough proportions, sixty to seventy percent of school buildings typically are gonna be first floor, and you can add basket thirty to forty percent upstairs. You're not gonna want a kitchen, or a cafeteria, or a gymnasium, or a band room, right? There's just certain things we typically don't wanna put four K early childhood kids on a number of. It's done. Don't get, don't take that to mean it can't be done, and it isn't done. But if we were starting in the ideal scenario, we would look to say third, fourth, and fifth, plus libraries, maybe plus one or two more programs. The advantages are smaller footprint, less roof area, less roof to replace forever, generally more energy efficient, because our roofs are one of our largest areas of heat loss. So, more, heat rises, so roofs generally, even when they're well insulated, are some of our larger areas of heat loss. So, the advantages of two-story are smaller footprint, less roof to replace over the life of the building, generally less heat loss. Negative is, we have to build at least two stairs, usually it's more than that, usually it's three or four, depending on how large the school gets, and we have to add an elevator. So, those are definitely the drawbacks. It also creates a more compact plan. You can envision, if we have a sprawling one-story school that's, you know, eighty to one hundred thousand square feet, if you happen to have a program in one end that needs to get access to a program in the other, we try to avoid that, right? We try to make it the shared stuffs in the middle to reduce that. But it can become kind of a sprawling building whereby vertically, you're moving up and downstairs fifteen to eighteen feet, and now you're connected to what was below you, versus going all the way across the building. We don't have any preconceived notion of whether one or two-story is right or wrong. We generally have seen as buildings trend to four-section schools for eighty-five to ninety thousand square feet or larger, we tend to find two-story is when that comes into consideration, but we usually would explore both ways.
Cost difference?
I think generally, we've never designed the same school, one-story and two, in good enough that way. I'm pretty answered exactly what it is. But I think what we generally found is that one-story, the savings in one-story is not building an elevator, not building the stairs. You have more roof area, as I said before. We typically will also have more site work and more footings and foundations. So, if we're digging a trench, and we're putting a footing in that trench to carry the building, it's the same-sized trench, whether you're pouring a larger footing for two stories versus a smaller footing for one. So, we have more site work with one-story, and then those other variables. I think we generally found, there's not a significant cost difference between one and two-story. It depends on what the site offers you, what the program is, and what the client preference is in terms of number of stories.
Is there a check requirements in new buildings in Wisconsin?
Yes, there is a mechanical code. I can't remember which version of ASHRAI, American Society for Heating, Refrigeration Engineering, has standards, and the state code adopts some version of the ASHRAI standard that we have. Your air conditioning just per hour in a new building or a major remodel building would be significantly more than you're currently getting out of a building. Seventy-year-old unit ventilators, for sure.
There's variants in Minnesota too, within Wisconsin for summer school. I believe in Minnesota, there's a requirement for cooling during summer, if you're holding summer school. Wisconsin doesn't have that requirement.
Wisconsin has no requirement for cooling, no. That's, we haven't built, we haven't done a major new building or major renovation where air conditioning has been added. Ten years ago, it might have been a little different, but the last, I think it's a fifteen, I didn't myself, it's been at least fifteen years. That trend has really changed, where air conditioning is kind of a baseline assumption in an educational environment now.
So, Matt, do you know, say, at elementary school, when you decided to start in the sixty, no, two-way, and do air conditioning, do you event? Will code make us then do the whole building, or can we do sections at a time?
We can do sections at a time. I think the big issue there is, given the age of the mechanical system, it is kind of a tipping point of when we go by central chiller plant, central boiler plant, it's kind of an all-or-nothing versus having two systems operating. But there's no code requirement related to that.
Matt, when you met with the leadership team and initially did some of the discussion, were there other areas that were brought up from the other buildings as far as wants and needs?
Yes, the middle school, we had some conversations regarding some renovations, some of which actually happened. I can't remember what the rule was called, but the room off the library.
Yep.
The old family consumer center. There was a need there to turn that into something more usable. There were a couple of other needs at the middle school level. I'm drawing a diagram of what they are, I didn't bring the full file, but there were some there, but they weren't, they weren't big in terms of we need to buy more classrooms or anything like that. It was more like, this could be better, right? It was more, you know, the gym needs a lot of storage, you know, it's cool.
I think we had Carl Sanderson dug into that a lot more in their report. There's a lot, a larger list of each building, what their needs, in the high school, in the medium school.
Because I'm just curious, and I'll, I'll use, potentially, like, the high school needing a bigger, like, is that brought up? You know, or the opportunity to have a walking track somewhere.
Yeah.
The university also has a list of the high school.
That's what Carl Sanderson, where it should be in there, there's a more complete list of needs, like a lardification at the high school and that type of thing.
Yeah, I hope they're, they're, this committee meeting, we have to do it. We're in the same month from the last meeting, yeah, March, it's still March.
The regular board meeting.
And that's the two thousand twelve?
Fourteen, fourteen, yeah.
Any other questions, Matt?
Hey, looking through all the options, I keep coming back to, and I think probably because I've touched this process a lot, cafeteria and the kitchen space, because that's like the center of everybody's day. I know at the middle school right now, they're eating, starting lunch in the ten o'clock hour. So, the more we keep cramming in, we either have to double the space or we're gonna have kids eating lunch at all times of the day. And I know that that's a big factor. So, even when I look through some of these, we're just simply cutting on, I know, kitchen space and cafeteria spaces.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, the scenarios where we were adding a grade level, so if we're adding a fourth grade level to the current middle school, I believe the majority of those have the kitchen expanding and have more cafeteria student space in each of those scenarios. We didn't have that where it was three grades, even if we shifted to three grades.
And then the gym was the other thing, like you talked about.
Gym was always an option or a variable there as well, of one more gym space at the middle school, correct?
Right. And I think.
And some of that, just as a quick reminder, that would have made us gym-neutral, if we lose the elementary school gym. So, that was part of the conversation too, is not as though we're adding more gym space, we're maybe staying neutral if we added one court for the middle school and lost the current elementary school gym.
Do you have any idea what these numbers, twenty-one, were costing? Percentage change rates, any projection?
I think right now, when we're budgeting projects for next year, which is, we're adding the cycle, we're starting to talk about projects that might be approved in twenty twenty-four, we're looking at data from today and adding anywhere from five to eight percent. And when you're saying wide range, it has to be a number. Honestly, we just have a conversation with our clients, and they say, how risk averse are you? Do you wanna be super careful and add eight percent, knowing that that may put the financial question to the level where the community won't support it? Or are you more comfortable at five, knowing that if it actually is eight or more, in reality, that we'll just have to work together to pare back on areas of the building to meet the budget? So, that's why we have, we use a range, and just have a upfront conversation about what level of risk tolerance the board or the clients would have regarding inflation. And we haven't seen a change. I mean, we've seen some things stabilize. I mean, it's not, it's not taking, you know, ten months to get steel joists anymore, and we're seeing things normalize. They haven't come down. It's not like we suddenly saw them come back to where they were two years ago. So, they're growing at a slower rate, and they're still growing, and they haven't retracted in terms of going back to what we would have considered more and all a couple of years ago.
I think we also, we spent a lot of time talking about the considerations when you looked at using existing and building new, about the timeline. Obviously, using existing is going to draw it out a lot longer, then the impact on the learner, who are still building in the space while the learning is occurring. So, I don't, I don't remember exactly what we did to the timeline or how we sailed on.
Yeah, the elementary school solutions, where we stayed on site, the general strategy was do the major addition, get those classrooms done, right? Move students into those classrooms, and then we can come back in and tear down a section and remodel the section that's there. So, from a phasing perspective, it wasn't a super complicated project, but it would take longer, right? It's a distinct construction period from foundations to completing the building, move kid, and then restart that whole process demolition. So, it was a slightly longer timeframe. I would also just add as a reminder, and I think we always had solutions for the site of current elementary school that would improve the current condition in terms of drop-off, pickup, and other things. There was never a solution that said, this really works, and this really makes a lot of sense. That was a pressure point on that solution that I don't think you really could quite answer. Having only one access point, basically, on the front of the school. Arguably, there's a narrow connection on the back of the site, but I don't even think it was wide enough to squeeze a road through, was it? So, that was probably a big limiting factor to, again, we can improve it, but it was definitely still not gonna be a great site from the drop-off, pickup perspective.
And that remodeling, that elementary school, was ruled out, just a remodel, because?
Well, we, we got to that next document, or we had the floor.
I'm just talking, we, we don't do any, I mean, we've just remodeled it to the moment.
I don't, I.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, that was, we ended up, that was option two.
I don't know that there was ever an option where we didn't ask for, but I think what, what that was getting to, right? That's where you were going, one of us fixing up what we have. Yeah, working from memory, I do think the facility assessment needs were budgeted as one of the very early phases. I can't put my hand on that right now, but we can definitely look at that if that's something important. I was thinking, we could go back to that as a baseline, if what is interested in exploring that.
Does that point, that would be all the time, probably, or would be a priority, and all of that, like, following the play?
I'll try to simplify the thirty-five pages of the building code that's on this. Roughly, if you do fifty, more than fifty percent renovation of the level in the code of level two, I consider that substantial renovations, moving walls, et cetera, then you are triggered to bring the building up to code. So, that would mean eighty-eight. So that would mean A D A, that would mean a care ventilation and, and anything else that's currently in a code standard. Just, if you were just to go in and take out the ceilings, take out the floors, paint the walls, put in new monitors, put in a new HVAC system and not move walls and not do much, that I believe would stay as a level one renovation generally. And likely you wouldn't have to. And we generally recommend clients, if you're going to go that far, in terms of an investment, it probably makes sense to consider getting up to code as much as you can. So that in the future, if you ever do more work, you don't have to go back and redo things that you just did. But that is a very specific evaluation when a scope is defined in terms of whether it's required or whether we would just recommend doing it because of the extent of scope is being done.
And when that Carl Sanderson, when they did their study, they broke it down per system like HVAC, will it constitute this type of system? So I, I think I've shared that, I can share it again with you. They did that study back in two thousand fourteen. You know, John pushed it out so many years, it's gone beyond his estimates, but he did break that down. So if you want to look at just in the rough, a rough estimate, what constitutes a rough, or if you want to do HVAC, different options, unit replacement or code chiller, maybe boxes like we have currently. We do have old information on that.
But there are new things that need to be added to that list.
Well, it was a pretty extensive list, they did pretty much every system. It's just they're all, they're all, they're all older now, so.
So if you look at work, I'll just use this as an example. If you look at some, like replacing bleachers in the gym and redoing locker rooms, as, you know, is that a level two of that?
Not the bleachers, no. Depends on what we're redoing in the locker rooms. If we're moving walls and reconfiguring showers to have individual shower units instead of group showers, then yes, that would technically be level two.
So how about adding on the security? Cause that could be the most pressing thing down there.
Additions are treated as brand new buildings to the perspective of code because you're not a sprinkled building. So if we add square footage, it would be a firewall at the current building wherever we connect. That's a code requirement. And then a new building is built and in the, through the lens of the code, that's a builder two totally separate building. You have a fire burning on this side of the wall and that building can fall down and the other one has to stay standing and vice versa. So it really is that piece of the building, whether it's a thousand square feet or forty thousand square feet would have to be built at today's standards, but we don't have to go back and do the rest. Thank you, Matt. You're very welcome. If there's any other questions that come up, please send them through the mark. I'm happy to address them and import and continue my conversation.
Anything, Sam? Any other discussion points that want to talk about for this item?
I, I spent a lot of time going back through the original, I have a six options, but I think there's actually nine or four where we have the As in the whole half. And I still came back down to this, this document titled, dated eight twenty, eight two twenty-two of those four options. In my opinion, those seem like the most reasonable, pro common solutions. With the exception of those additional for the same spot that we were.
I just thought one thing else, I forgot to mention at the beginning. For those of you that are looking up there and seeing East Troy Middle School, what the heck is that? We have no idea. I'd just be up front. This, this is all OCAL information. It's a weird checklist, right? We have no idea why it's posting as something it isn't. So don't see that as thinking it isn't your information. This is all accurate for OCAL.
I remember that from the fourth.
It's really weird. Please don't listen.
Manny, the show is hard copy printed out. OCAL.
I panicked when you told me that. He didn't panic.
Well, I have, I have some questions for all the board members. Especially after talking with Matt, the classroom is so controlled. Like the information I provided to you guys at the February twentieth meeting. We currently have a hundred and twenty-five total classrooms before all, between all four buildings. We have seventy-eight total sections of students and we are projected to be quite stable. So that tells me that we currently have forty-seven more classrooms than sections of students. We need that.
I would say that's not really comparable though because like.
Why isn't it comparable?
Because the requirements, such as the high school versus the kindergarten, the elementary school are completely different. And size left and all of that.
So it's just overall? Hundred and twenty-five classrooms, seventy-eight sections of students.
So now the biggest comparing apples to the command or something like that, but it's, you can't just.
Because of the configuration of the wire.
I would also argue that if you walk through the elementary school and the women's school in session, there's no extra woman.
I thought this was on the space issue, it was an age of building.
It's a boat issue. So, but if you're.
How did we educate two thousand and the same?
But if you're comparing that district wide, what's happening down at elementary school is not the same that's happening, right? So, but you're looking at the whole big district and asking us to make the decision, and I'm saying, you have to break each little one apart. Which we have to, because it's not fair to compare kindergarten to high school, right? I mean, there's bathrooms connected down there, some of the kindergarten classrooms have batteries, some don't. My own kid was taking speech lessons in a closet. That doesn't happen up here, right? Their speech service is not for sure, not closets.
So we can't be flexible moving grades from?
Yeah, to me, it comes down to what their cost is. And with the code when they're calm better.
This is about costs, I'm just asking an overall question.
It always comes back down to costs, right?
A hundred and twenty-five classrooms and seventy-eight sections of students. That is a lot of classrooms. I'm just asking you questions.
Sure.
And I, you know, I discover all this by putting all the data together. So that's what brings up these questions is, do we need that many classrooms for seventy-eight sections of students?
We typically would do a capacity analysis of each of your schools. That truly looks at it not just through the quantity of seventy-eight times twenty-five equals X. It's largely looking at the high school and saying, that is a family consumer science lab. We, we use that seven out of eight or five out of eight periods a day. Whatever it is that we can use that classroom for. As you can imagine, an English room, a socialized room, a science lab can be used more than a band room, a family consumer science, art, a biogate, et cetera. So that's how we would typically analyze the capacity at middle schools and high schools. So truly be looking at every room, how much can it be utilized realistically? It's great to say, I want to use the art room a hundred percent of the day. But the reality is, there's not enough students or students can't fit art into their overall schedule to use it a hundred percent of the day. So we have to be cognizant of that when we analyze the capacity of that room. So if, if the board would like a full capacity analysis of each of the schools, that's absolutely something we can do and do all the time.
And is there cost associated with that?
Because there would be that. It's not exorbitant. I mean, it's going to be at the, it's in the thousands of dollars, but it's not fifty thousand dollar or anything like that. Not, not even close. I'd have to ask our team what it would take for three buildings. We have good inform, more buildings, sorry. We have great information on the board, so that's a good start. And we have accurate plans, which is simply have to meet with each of the building level leadership and district leadership to determine exactly what each stage to do for today. The biggest thing that we have to figure out is what spaces are being underutilized. To do a true capacity analysis, we can't just take a room and. If we had an extra full-sized classroom and we're educating four kids in there because we can, we can't just count that as a classroom that really should be a room that could have been utilized for more kids. So that's the hardest part, that's where the art of this comes in, it's not a science. But we definitely want to do that.
I think it's worth it. We need to talk more, Dan. I think back to your question too, Jeff. Cause I need to, like, you know, how do we do this when we have two thousand kids? I think we have to remember that the services are just different now. And a lot of the services, no one required to have as far as special ed numbers and movement and interment and all that, I think it's just.
Are you hearing numbers so different?
Yep, no, I completely understand that. And after we talked at February twentieth meeting, we kind of came to consensus after talking with the principals and stuff that we needed about eight to nine total classrooms for the whole district for special ed and language. Do you remember that conversation?
I remember this.
I, I was actually surprised, I thought we would need more than that. That's why I asked.
So Matt, would the, the capacity analysis also then help the district determine, and I just open enrollment numbers up? Because if we're truly at capacity, say in our elementary school, then that would help us analyze where we would go and open enrollment?
Yes, sort of. The caveat being, if you have four kindergarten classrooms and you're operating them at nineteen students in the four rooms, I'd argue you could probably open the valve and take on, you know, eight kids and make each of those twenty-one and not affect the quality of education. So that, that's the variable, is it'll kind of give you, we typically would suggest that here's an ideal capacity and a max capacity. Like in the dream world, if we could educate twenty-two kids in every second grade classroom and it was always that perfect, you know, it isn't. That would be your target capacity. And then the upper end is what is the most students can be comfortable educating in a second grade classroom? So the capacities will be ranges, not exact numbers. But that's just reality, right? How a building works.
Does that capacity analysis also look at number of staff in the classroom? Is that?
When we get to the middle and high schools, when we're applying the utilization percentage, yes. So if we had a metal shop where we're using it every period of every day, but there's two educators sharing it, that would be an example where yes, it would be reflected by utilizing that room one hundred percent of the day versus maybe fifty percent of the day if we only had one instructor using it.
And I'm thinking more along the lines of the student has a dedicated aid, that's another body to network.
We would not consider that in capacity. We, that's where the size of the actual classroom becomes the conversation. If we know we generally are going to have that or periodically going to have that, that's where getting the classroom size correct is critical. We would not typically count special ed classrooms in a capacity analysis because those students are generally in the classroom and they're being pulled out and getting, receiving some special services and supports. But their actual capacity is counted in the core classroom calculation. And it's just such a variable, right? That year to year, that, that can swing in terms of how many students and we want to make sure that we've got the base capacity. If your percentage of special ed students goes down, you still have the base capacity to support your targeted number.
But even if we did this capacity study, we're still not dealing with elementary schools. I think what this circle is drawn to is, question is, can we go to three buildings? I think that's what this whole thing is going to circle around to, is that can we go to three buildings is the biggest question. We can do the capacity, capacity study and it's not going to matter if they don't let you just go and remodel it down there. So I'm just throwing it out there, guys. You know, I think that's where this is all going to circle around to is can we go to three buildings? Can we add on a three, two of the buildings to haul their kids? And if you looked at that once, can you look at it again? And, but doing this study isn't going to determine anything at the elementary school. We still have to do something there or walk away from it. And that's, it's going to happen sooner or later, guys. You can't just keep pushing it down the road.
The other piece I would say, you know, a bit to Bob's point is, if, if we could ever, let's say we do the capacity study and we all have this boom by a moment where we agree on the capacities of our four schools. If we don't have, if we can't agree on what our enrollment target is, it's not going to do us a lot of good. That's the other variable we're eventually going to have to come to some consensus around is, if we agree on capacities of current buildings, what is our target enrollment that we want our long-term solution to be able to support? That's a totally separate conversation from capacity, but I just want to make a turn point and let's see if that variable has to be something we can agree on moving forward as well. We have to agree on tonight, obviously, but start thinking about that.
That would be an implication then, if you increase class sizes, eight, five, that would be less, three is being available. So the class size would be increased. That's where we set the whole enrollment amounts for those to calculate there. Where we have the level policy related to enrollment by grade level, but typically like Manny explained, we price the at twenty level for four K, actually lesser four K, as we entered the section two years ago. If you keep that number even lower than, than twenty. That's from PDEC, from our surveys from staff who were, from parents. And that was one of the things that was attractive to last year was the smaller class sizes.
So Jeff, are you suggesting that we have enough classrooms as is, so how is the elementary school volume questioned everywhere else? Is that what your point is?
I'm just asking the question.
Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, obviously we're in a varied, a spot, right? So we need to be as responsible as we can and try to maintain a very high level of education. You know, we all know our situation, right? Like we're, we've been declining enrollment since two thousand and ten. We're projected to continue to decline for the next five years at minimum. Our five-year operation, which was given to us last time, with a three percent salary one, that's a twenty-two million dollar, two hundred and ninety thousand, twenty-two million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollar deficit for five years. Right? Our community is struggling.
The twenty-two million is adding all of them together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five years total, yeah. Our community is struggling. I just learned today, actually, that the town of Osipulaw has ninety-eight properties pulling one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars of delinquent property taxes just from the January install. That makes me really sad. That makes me want to be really responsible. That's ninety-eight properties. We don't know if those are homes, but those people are going to be kicked out of whatever, those properties are.
Is that comparable data with that, with that information of previous years? That could be better than what we're reading.
I, I don't have it. I just heard it today, so.
I mean, it's upsetting, sure, but it doesn't, it's not comparable to me because I don't know what, I mean, it could have been far worse two years ago. And then it's still a pandemic and people are really off and things too, right?
It could. Would you like to call the, how long do you have to serve?
I don't, but to me, that's just a risk. I think, I mean, I'm very proud of the fact that in my last seven years on board, the no rate has gone down every year I've been on board. And that has nothing to do with being on board. I would say that is a kudo to that administrators and the team that we have in our buildings maximizing what they have.
But you understand the no rate is.
I'm not talking, but, but I'm not talking. Thank you. So by saying that though, that has a direct impact on taxes paid year and year and year. And we're trying to find the best place to layer in this project to do something or be responsible. In the last seven years, the best time that we saw to do that was that summer of twenty-one-ish, when it looked like it was going to be a very minimum dollar impact. And that would have been a great time to do it, best impact for our taxes. And that's when the state budget changed and that option got taken off the table. And that was heartbreak into the end of course. And so it's still a matter of figuring out what project we're doing and then the word that you're in it. It always is going to come back down to the dollars, cents, period, what's been best for our staff and students and, and our community and our taxpayers. I'll never argue that. But doing nothing is the biggest gamble of all. If something happens down there, we're going to have to leave that up to rights and to make that happen.
I would say a bad plan is versus no plan at this point.
And I would say no plan is a bad plan.
And do you understand that this last year's budget, that the no rate went way down? And do you understand that this last year's budget, that the no rate went way down, right? But the property values went up eighteen point four percent. And we only lowered the no rate twelve. So the no rate still went down, but everybody's property prices for the school went up six point four percent. So no rate doesn't necessarily mean that the taxes going up or down.
Oh, correct, there's other variables in that. I am very clear. My own property value went up, my tax still went down. So it affects everybody differently, right? And I was very cognizant of that decision that I made, but I also don't wanna rub Peter with a tail pole and scrape up all the rums and rum on the barrel so we can't provide a premier education for our students. It has to be in the middle and you can live it up. And I feel like we got there with both four options. Unless you have a new solution to bring to the table of saying, let's do this and let's do that, I'm, I'm all ears. I think having new eyes look at this is a great opportunity to find a new solution to this problem.
That's why I brought up assessing and seeing if we can go to three schools because the operational savings will be pretty significant, I believe.
But as you and I talked about last time, show me that cost savings.
I can't do it personally, we would have to have someone like Matt or somebody do it.
I don't, when going through this process of work, I don't see a significant cost savings. I can see an efficiency improvement, right? The whole process of education is gonna be more efficient. But we're still gonna have to have the same leaders and janitors and classrooms and all of that, because we're still gonna have five sections. Doesn't matter where they are. Or we're gonna start cramming more kids into a classroom. Uh, which is other, another gamble because then they're gonna have parents saying, I don't want my kid in a classroom of twenty-five, twenty-eight, thirty kids. And we're gonna be hurting ourselves by having more. Which is an option as well.
That's why I asked the question because we currently have one hundred and twenty-five classrooms. If you take out the thirty one from the elementary, we still have ninety-four classrooms.
That's why I asked you, are you saying that the buildings we have are enough to stuff kids into?
And I don't know, that's why I brought up for this question. It would be wonderful if it was.
But we also run into the problems of hypothetically, right? Moving eighth grade to the high school, moving seventh grade to the high school. I don't know that I would want my seventh grader who's pretty much about his, hanging around twelfth graders. That seems a little to me, I'm sure there's high schools in our state that have seven through twelve, so it's total. I don't know, I would treat that for my children to come here for that, but certainly something you can look at. Which then also would mean that we'd have probably fifth through third of them. I mean, however you start mixing it, when you start actually looking at those kids in those grades, there is a reason that they went to three through five over there because a second grader's, they already different than a sixth grader. And stolen levels and I have those exact ages that are very different and how do I want them? Having more than enough space, having lunch in that space. Watching a special ed kid destroy a classroom in sixth grade or eighth grade looks severely differently than a second grader. How do I know that I want this question? Those are all to me other variables that have to be factored in.
There's a ton of variables.
Yeah.
So a lot bigger issue total, right? Our operational budget added in, we find enrollment added in, we have to consider all of it together.
And I would argue, we're gonna have to keep looking at operational every year. We can look at it all we want in five years. We know that the barrier gets more unrealistic and, and not as accurate as time goes on, right? But we have to keep looking at the, the brick and mortar to it at the same time. Operational until we have a set budget from the state and it doesn't change, which has never happened in the last seven years. This is gonna get ongoing and this is statewide. This is, this is actually nationwide and actually I would say North American wise. I met teachers from, um, Canada on spring break that are talking about the same fiscal cliff in a few years. And we had a whole conversation about it. And it was so eye-opening to know that people from Quebec are talking about having the same issues in their schools that we are here. And how do you fix it? How, that's why I said, how will we fix it? And everybody there went, mm. But you come back to Wisconsin, right? We still don't know what next year's what it's gonna have, so how do you predict five years off of that? And we don't, because you didn't have what this game is gonna provide.
That projection right now is what is.
Are you talking enrollment or the variable?
The variable, right? It's based on the assumption that nothing with the budget. The budget stays like it is right now, correct?
Well, for next year, sure, I'll, I'll, I'll look at that for next year and the year after. And then after that, I'm gonna be left like. Cause that's, now we're talking variables of variables and, and. You just look at that enrollment study and already in the first year, our elementary school enrollment dropped. That's, that's how we work, no one knows.
At our season meeting last week, we had legislators that I suggested a three year update. And one of the questions that legislators were is how many of you were use, using S dollars for operational expenses? The majority of schools said yes. Some did, they add additional staffing from the S dollars. And they would like to keep those because they've been beneficial for kids. Now they're having the issue of saying, but likely we'll push it into an operational referendum. Keep the things that have been very productive and professionally improving the educational climate for their kids, which means they go to operational. And then if the question was asked, well, how many of those, and there's three nice schools in CISO eleven, there was probably twenty-seven schools represented that day. How many of you would be going to referendum in April of twenty twenty-three, but now believe statewide there's eighty-one?
Eighty, roughly eighty, fifty, roughly fifty of those are operating. And there were forty operating questions in November. So ninety in the last four months, six months. So a number of hands went, they are going to referendum for three or operational or for debt questions, we were there last year. And then, or what happens the year after that? How many school districts here would say we're gonna be in an operational deficit? I would say it was eighty to eighty-five percent of the schools raised there. I'd have to say that we will have a funding cliff in two years. The, the proposals from, uh, well, at least the governor's proposals now are, are good. I mean, there's solid information there. Honestly, for the majority of schools that are declining enrollment in Wisconsin like we are, the per pupil increase on the revenue level formula really doesn't do us much good at all. Obviously it's additional dollars, but that dollar, that's just the, that's the parachute, that's the whole stimulus clause in the revenue level for it. It allows you to have that break for that year and then that money is gone for the year after that. The per pupil adjustment aid is a minimal increase. That would be more beneficial for us and other schools that are declining enrollment. But the biggest impact obviously would be special education. I believe, um, that we're about eight and a half percent that we fund out of, fund ten to fund our special education requirement for free and reduce, or free and appropriate public education for all kids. With that, um, you know, it's about one point four, one point five million dollars a year. If they increased that to about forty percent or forty-five percent, we'd have about a million dollars more for general funds. But that still doesn't solve our problem for, um, the, uh, the operational impact. So I guess I'm going, going to, to talk about that information. I think I could, Jeff, you're talking about no rate and the levy and how that impacts taxes as well. The superintendent's tried to let the legislators know that if we don't fix our integrated formula for funding schools, what is not equitable for all districts and then you're forcing schools to say taxpayers, you've got to bear the burden. And some do and pass and others don't. That's not, that's not fair for the students that are in Osceola or they're in Richmond or Amory. But unfortunately, there's, whatever the reason is, no one wants to tackle that process. Because it's, it's a, it's a complicated process and it's gonna impact everyone quite differently. But that, you know, that's, that's an interesting statistic. The number of schools, and there's data, DPI, which you can look at even in our region, that have recurring referendums. You know, doesn't sunset hours. And they're talking about going back and doing an additional recurring referendum to make their answer. And that's just the variance with, with funding and it's, it's not fair. And that's, that's unfortunate for the kids, which is a detriment.
So, well, can I ask you why you want to consider option like five or five A? That you're like really just like against it? That gives you flexibility as class sizes, um.
Well, I didn't, as we went.
Cause that's not one of those on that one sheet, so you're basically, um. But because it's adding the elementary to that intermediate school.
Not five, five A keeps the existing elementary school with the district office and an early childhood and a kids. That's, so that was one of them.
No, five P.
That's five A.
Five P is early childhood, fourth grade, as a community school.
That's five. That's just five.
Uh, this says option five and five B and then five is. On this.
Yeah, option five, they're the same basic grade structure, both of them pull fifth grade up to the middle school in an either kindergarten through fourth as the intermediate or early childhood through fourth. Those are the, the, the only difference is whether we keep the elementary school for some programs or not. That's kind of a nuance, I think. My sense of the bigger question, Jan, is that grade configuration, right? And getting to three buildings was what you were curious about.
It gets us to three buildings. We have more flexibility as those groups fluctuate at the early age. If we needed five or if we needed four classrooms depending on, I mean, if you look out the, um, with the projections we have for enrollment, we're around that eighty, um, or under a hundred for a class size. If you look at the projections that we receive, and I know.
Do, do we have a grade rate now that has under, under the students? One?
No, we have four K's under a hundred. First grade's under a hundred, second grade's under a hundred.
That's not true.
Fourth grade's under a hundred, sixth grade's under a hundred. That's just from the fall enrollment, I just.
Looking at the adjusted headcount, we have to look at the actual headcount. We don't care about so.
That's why when Jeff said the eighty-three, I popped out.
It's four K in fourth grade, and that was from, or January.
Four K is normal because not every parent chooses to put your students, so that's very typical.
But we very, we've gone, we've gone so much as to like one twenty, one thirty, we're actually down to eighties.
There's a first grade that's under a hundred.
April, what did you say, you have to take the head count or the resident total?
So we're looking at physical students in the intermediate, the head count and not the adjusted headcount.
So four K has ninety-seven, first grade has eighty-two, fourth grade has ninety-four. That said, that is, that was the September ones.
Yep, that's correct, so those three grade.
And the other ones are under twelve, a hundred and three, so around a hundred.
Well, that's, that's like a whole section different if you're looking at eighty, that's, that's why. To be, one of the options or one of the things I look at is the very, very last page of this when it looks at making a, um, for option, I think it's option six, four K through grade five at the intermediate school. That projects thirty sections at twenty-five kids apiece, that's seven hundred and thirty kids in one building. That's a lot of kids.
Plus we've looked at like the lack of green space that would bring there.
Oh, that we lost it all. I mean.
And how cramped that space would be.
But we, but we did not look at a second story.
At the intermediate school?
Yeah, to do that option.
We did not have enough program to do it because we weren't adding enough square footage that would be able to go on a second story. Or the current footage at the intermediate school, even capable of a second story. It'd be shot, yeah, yeah. It's the rumor in every town we go into that it was built. I have a second story, Adam, rarely does that actually prove out. Yeah, that was good for that one.
Or my hospital that was built and told it was, it built an elevator over here and it can't connect to this part.
What?
Yeah.
So I know we're exploring options and stuff, but I try to visualize what it looks like. I try to visualize what the K through five building would look like at the intermediate school. If you add it on. So gym space, you'd have to divide the gym in half of that, that'd do one side or the other. You'd have buy it in the morning for one and buy it in the afternoon for the other. Lunch is not really feasible to do with six grades with one lunch room area and the capacity of the timing that you have for lunch. If you're adding on the space at the intermediate school, it's, I mean, there's a hill, which is the dream, um, reservoir by the V and R, the coordinate. Not a lot of playground space on the back or all the space now for three to fifth grade, but you had three more grade levels to have and the age appropriate playground equipment. And now where are we going to be doing for, we have a traffic and safety concern issue with the elementary school currently. You put seven hundred, some people in the intermediate school there with the number of bus traffic and counter traffic and people coming to the middle school and the high school, that's gonna be hard. If you're talking about, I mean, I guess the space analysis, yeah, I think it's probably a good idea, especially if you're talking about enrollment capacity. You know, there are different, different ways and strategies like art on a cart and music on a cart, where those classrooms just go from classroom to classroom. In my opinion, what we end up doing then is any family, even whether there's poses available or not, and they're starting to decide where they're going to be going to school, they will choose some routes. And that issue of deciding their moment will continue to move forward. And if we're gonna talk open enrollment and, and talk about, you know, the possibility of closing open enrollment for some, when you have a family that's four or five kids and they're already established in your district and you're saying no to the younger kids, um, they likely pull all of their kids. So that, I mean.
And I just wanna clarify, I just brought that up as.
The space thing?
Yes.
Yeah, no problem, yes. But, but that has been a question that's been asked in other districts, well, we just don't take open enrollment. Well, I think on average, we probably are a net seventy to seventy-five kids every year for open enrollment. That's ribbon.
And I know that, um, if you decide to look at three buildings, I think you need to really involve the public. I know when we went to four buildings, um, at the end of the nineties, in that timeframe when we were looking at intermediate school, they talked about three buildings. They talked about building a big elementary, intermediate school at that site somewhere out there. And, um, I was on the committees and the public wanted smaller schools. They didn't, they didn't want to make schools. I'm not saying that is where we're at today, but I think if you're gonna go there, Rob, you need to involve the public, get their impact, your voice too because everyone's there, you know, paying taxes here. And that was a big consideration back, why you went to four buildings, because they wanted that smaller school district deal. That was important at that time. That's a huge change.
It was one of the factors that the initial study in the, that put together was the marketing department of having, I mean, we are known for the quality of our buildings now.
State one.
Any school that comes in here for an, let me give that a music event or graduation, whatever. I can't believe how great your school district looks. There are other districts I've been in that don't look and didn't hear that. It's pride in that and, and that builds upon that expectation for people. That has an impact on their home costs and values as well, if they're not gonna be living here anymore either. That's props to you about that.
It's, it was, it was a, it was a community's decision to, they wanted to stay a smaller school, they, they liked small home being. And by moving seven hundred kids into one building, we lost that. And that's why, I'm just saying, that's why at that time we went there. Today, I don't know what the public wants.
You know, another thing. I wanna look at that, but the cost.
Right.
Of moving seven hundred kids wherever you put them in three buildings. To me, yes, it's more obviously to build a new school, which would completely model that one.
Right.
It's really, when you talk about all the other pros and cons of reconfiguring the interior district and the kids in the building, it's not a lot of difference. And just going, doing remodeling. And just going, doing remodeling. That was one of the reasons that I took off the table too was. I can't.
So Mark, have we ever looked at um other districts with similar enrollment than all of you, their spacing and building?
Um, yeah, I think we did some comparison with schools our side across the state, um, enrollment size. Um, another very, three sp- building schools and four member schools.
I don't know. We, we must have had some work, I think, when I remember seeing that.
And the biggest area I think you're gonna find is that the, some of the districts here size would be two elementary schools, K five leading a middle school and high school versus K two, three, five.
Right.
I think that's the, just thinking about the districts I'm aware of, that probably the biggest difference you'll see. We, we can do it again, I mean, it's not a huge effort if it's something that.
And just, I just agree.
I think of like the day, going through the buildings, we go back to asking administrators, have any spaces not being utilized, like I just can't picture where we would put, how this would all happen.
I, I do think the capacity analysis, i- if the board wants that to be done, will shed some light on what spaces may be underutilized. And I guess we'll find some, that's normal, you're gonna find that in every district. Um, but that then gives us a better idea of what, if any, grades can we push up? If we wanna look at it from that simple level, right, that's probably where you start, as was noted. Start pushing grades up, building to building, and then what's left? Do we want to add, do we need to remodel, do we need nothing, do we need all? Um, but that's what that analysis would start to shed some light on. And there may eventually become a point where all of you as board members say, we can push up, but there's just a point where I'm not comfortable with X in the building with Y, as was discussed before. That's very normal uh as well.
There'd also be a variance in space for four K, because many are community based, so we'll have four Ks on site. We utilize big areas and other centers on both sides of the school district because they don't have a space for it. I mean, like, you know, we used to have two.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, it's impossible to find a, I shouldn't say that. There's no way you're gonna find the perfect grade configuration through data or through what somebody else has done. Because they're all over the board. There are seven twelve buildings, there are K six buildings, there's a ton of K twelve buildings in the state, right? And it all depends, academic performances are all over the board and we can't pin down a grade configuration to academic performance. It really has to be what's right for you in terms of what space you have available, what grades your community is comfortable sharing a building uh and finding a solution there. I, we, we've chased statistics and data for decades trying to say that this is the best grade configuration and you find one that performs at a really high level and you find one thirty miles away that doesn't, and it pulls up that goal and try to find data to support that decision. The space side we can do, but I think the grade configuration has to be something you as a leadership are comfortable with. And the available space is just one factor to consider.
Yeah, I think most of, um, Baldwin Woodville School District, most recently, they, they have their own schools in Woodville and it's been um built for a five A building. Um, but they actually moved their fifth graders to the elementary school and added on there because parents were, they had concerns of fifth graders being the eighth graders in the middle school setting. So they made that adjustment, middle school only had the uh, making middle school five or six E and moved it and additional space on where they had for their elementary school at Greenwood. But again, you're right, it's varies from school to school.
Matt, I was lost with.
I wonder that. Think we can, can let down a lot of them, like just six weeks.
Yeah, let me, let me verify that with your team, they'll actually do that. Sorry to share with you that I don't actually do that.
Bob, the Dom, walk now.
Matt, were you involved at all in Rice Lake's project?
Was not. I'm not familiar. My niece and nephew are graduates and the district know a little bit about it, but.
Yeah, I, I, it'd be interesting because they went from, their high school enrollment went from twelve hundred down to eight hundred, that I know. They had a referendum question for a new building and that failed. So it'd be interesting what solutions they came up with.
I know, for sure, definitely. There's a lot of districts along the, I'll get this right, the ninety four or, or if you go, Moston, Portage, Reesburg, that, that's part of the state, they all had something very similar. And they've all had to make a great deal of changes too. They all built new high schools within five years of each other, so they have tons of excess capacity. So they've all been through some of those areas, those challenges as well.
So is your capacity study reminding you of that, like, overutilized area? I think of some of our gym sites, that are.
Usually what we're gonna find is that typically we're not, overutilization for gym spaces is not driven by P E hours and requirements. It's more driven by community demand and use. So it's, we won't look at it from that perspective. If, if we're having a hard time getting our required hours of P E and we're gonna build, I mean, definitely the capacity study will identify that. But it's not gonna look at it from the lens of the community because more is always better.
Right.
And I don't know that you could provide enough.
I don't either.
So.
Bob, historically, do you know why they never connected the high school with the middle school?
They wanted the separate buildings. They didn't build that eight group, they didn't want them to get, they didn't want the eight groups together, it felt was better separate.
I just guess, because they share pool, right?
Yeah.
They should, they.
But they're not connected all day long, yeah, they want them separate. And that was one of the things that by fifth grade moved out too, was not just because the middle school was growing or running out of room at the time, but they wanted that grade with a lower grade level, they built fifth grade as tool for eighth grade.
Because the middle school was initially built for four, right?
Yes, by three.
Okay.
Hey, there's a, there's, I will say there's generally always an architectural solution to s- to these things. If we're doing a project for a client in western Minnesota, who's putting fifth through eighth graders in their current high school, adding a new high school, and the shared link is gonna be tech ed, world language, family, consumer, van, choir instructors that are traveling between the two buildings right now. And it's gonna be set up where there's K-pop only access or connecting the middle and high school. So the middle school students, when they're going to van in the high school, it's gonna be a staff member who bobs them through the door, gets them on the class. Van instructor will get them back to the safe side of the doors and then they'll go back to their middle school experience. So there's ways, if we get in the situation where the only solution is something where it's something we can live with, but we want some separation, I think we just have to look at how we create some physical barriers between them.
And no, you're giving out something though.
You owe for sure.
Right, right, I mean, it's not just that simple, you're gonna lose green space, parking space, you know, a- all of the other spaces back with it. You look through all of those.
Tell us where it is that way, right?
They.
The buildings are connected, but definitely.
Yeah, and again, I'm not advocating that, I just, I just don't want us to kind of leap to the end of saying, it's not possible because they don't want X and Y. There, if, if that's the right solution, that we can all get behind, I, let us see if we can find ways to create space that provides the separation you desire, but takes advantage of the physical environment that you have. If the capacity study finds that we have some space to reutilize.
You note that there's been two sticking points for me with looking at all the buildings. You know, two buildings, the parking and pickup at the elementary school, right?
Yes.
And then um the others. Um, middle school, something like the middle school. So if, if we look to, you know, pick up that I think moving people around, I just, I worry still that whatever we do down at elementary school in the interim, it still needs to be addressed. We saw this emergency, this possibility of something arising that we need to, to book at the elementary school in the interim. But then also that building wall, we have kids, the thorn, our youngest learners, that's actually as well, so.
Yeah, I, I think, we're, don't hold me to this, but I guess right now that we're thirty to thirty six months from anything being implemented. If we all pull together for an April twenty twenty four referendum, you're still gonna have to get the elementary school twenty four to thirty six months down the road before anything would be implemented.
Really, it's an A project.
Correct.
Truly.
But if we're just looking at the, the concern around the age of the elementary, obviously, we have a two to three year window, we still have to get through with that building. If I'm taking all of my dominos correctly.
And if you take the elementary school off the table, right, the next oldest building in the district is what? The middle school. At which then we're now adding on to, and now we're taxing that part as well, so.
Yeah, those are variables that have to be considered when, when we have enough detail to have, to help you consider them, I agree. So I'm generally hearing, I think I saw consensus around capacity, is that fair? Is that something that the board wants us to?
I would like a top first.
We'll, 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 we'll be on the fair, yeah. Sounds like there's some interest in that, the board.
Because I still stand with Bob and the fact that I don't think it's gonna change a lot. So I wanna make sure we're spending our dollars the best.
I'm trying to think of which variables can we, even if it takes a little bit of extra work and analysis, can we at least get some data that we, as a group, can find some consensus around? As I said before, the capacity's not gonna help us a lot if we can't as a group agree on what our target enrollment is. So that's another dialogue for another night if we can come around, what is that gonna be? Once we can compare those two and we have consensus that we trust the capacity study and we agree on our target enrollment, now the variables be, that's a big variable to get out of the way. Now we can really start to look at options through that lens of packing them all in or providing flexibility and every variable in between.
Just to say you had a question.
We're pretty much covered.
And I still think that we still gotta work on that short term plan for the three, three to, for, you know, what's gonna happen if something goes down, what is our plan?
So, okay, so um, so that would mean making some upgrades of the current building. Possibly, or.
Maybe.
We're gonna run, we're gonna run our fiber because right now the elementary is running at one meg, every other building at two gig.
One gig.
One gig.
It was a meg.
Everyone else is running at ten. And we're not able to run the capacity for um technology and equipment. We're doing that on the summer.
Yes, we have not got the dates, but upper disorder is complete.
But I guess my concern is, um, I, I agree that it's thirty six months out of the minimum for something. I hate this, what if something happened, C P Y is that building, and you didn't, you didn't, we haven't done anything about it. It's gonna take operational dollars to get it, that accomplished. We don't, I mean, we're probably say a billion dollar or more project to secure entrance of the elementary school. Um, we don't have that in our operational budget. So if it's a short term fix, then it's gonna be investing in the current building, which takes off the, the expansion of, or even um building a new building, it would be a matter of fixing what you have, which will likely mean, you know, the HVAC and the roofs, a lot of, a lot of things that um people won't notice the difference, but there will be dealt, the difference is there. It will still be an old building, um, but we have to, we have to plan for that somehow. And that would have to be a referendum. Now we're investing millions of dollars likely in that building stating that, that our decision would be that we're gonna stay there long term. And then we would add on if we would ever need to, and play off and chew off some of those items individually over the years.
Well, Mark, so I'm just gonna challenge a little bit. So that, that security is an issue and we went to referendum and we're all gone home with building in three years. But security is still an issue for those three years. So what is, what would be the plan then to get us safe and secure in that building for those two years?
Probably about a million and a half dollars um to renovate the current area with the vestibule system and check into the office area. There's no space there.
Right, so that's, that's something that we have to do then, right? No matter what we're doing with that elementary school?
We can explore it more detail.
I just, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we do that? I think that would be, but you can see what it would take.
But there's some temporary options that you could do too, knowing that we're not staying there, that would be significantly cheaper. I mean, you could, you, you could, I could be completely, I mean, they rent out trailers at some schools when they're over capacity, right? I mean, you could plot that in front and have, I mean, there's, there's options out there that you wouldn't have to spend necessarily one point five million, but we have a concept of which direction we're generally moving before we decide one way or the other. We're saying put, and what makes sense to do, which branch is just a factor either, so.
If, if we look at that, we can come back with kind of gradients of investment too. And here's the, if we were gonna bring in the light with all our rest of our schools, this is a server, then usually raise and scale that back. We're obviously bringing up some things, but we, we can bring you some ideas like that if the board's interested, I think that makes some sense.
I think we can come up with a lot of short term options like that, right? Like, we went long some time ago, but no, we have a secure entrance, I'm the only one we're gonna vacate. I mean, you could hire a security officer for two to three years to stand outside the building the whole time for seventy thousand dollars.
I think, but I think we need to go in general direction global. I think I remember Cameron saying the safest option is going to be to make it a closed campus and put a fence around it. Nobody in, nobody out unless you have a badge. And I remember when he proposed that option and I thought, whoa, that sounds horrible, right?
What's that?
Pizza then. You just put a big, Bob's got, he said, big fence up there right on Third Avenue. You put a police, a security officer there, they let everybody in and everybody out.
Boom, done. Welcome to school.
I know. And I remember thinking, that's Florida, right? Like that, and I'm generalizing, but that's, you, you see it, there is, there's options out there. It's what works for us and our community and at the end of the day, we're the target period to be.
So it's not really about failure in light of, it's a matter of, like, each guy quality should be turned down. In my opinion, that, that should be something that should be completed and we take that as part of the cost. And say that we have to fix this square entrance. Um, probably try to continue on with our, our parking and our um bus traffic and stuff there as is. Or the security piece in front of the uh, of the office area and uh, and we extract today would be two of the top priorities at least in my, um, for the short term.
But Bob, you already, and you had that document, you said that, what's, what's your, what's the cost?
What's enough?
The board's gotta know what they're gonna do at the end of the day.
Exactly.
And then you can decide how much you wanna invest in the building. Um, nothing's broken down there. Um, that's, no one's saying something tomorrow, maybe next year. Um, I think the biggest need down there right now is we've been looking by with the HVAC system that's been here almost. And we can look by for a while longer. Um, I think the biggest concern is you'd have to look at doing something heating plant. Because if two H boilers, um, one goes down, you're not gonna have school during winter on a cold day because one will not heat that building. So I would recommend doing something with at least one boiler, a larger one, because I am big enough to hold that school. Try and look by, but if you've got a definite goal, say going to three buildings, going to four, I don't care. But doing something, then try and, try and look by. I'm a community man, I'm paying taxes, I'll be paid, I'm fixing to tell that for this year. Uh, so I don't wanna see us losing money either. Uh, so I don't wanna see a big investment down there. And once you stare with HVAC, now you're talking electrical upgrades and it doesn't stop.
The secure entrance?
Yeah.
It's more than just fiber, it's gonna be even.
Yeah.
And we're also just looking by with the infrastructure there and the water, those kind of. We're, we're not dying, we're not surviving.
So that would be my, look, secure entrance, and I think Matt can design something pretty, that's fairly reasonable, right? And then um, if I was gonna do something. If I was gonna do something with HVAC, I for sure do something with boiler. At least add one new boiler and make that large enough that if one went down, you could probably still have school. And then if you, whatever you do, you can always move that boiler, I don't know if it's. But that, that'd be my recommendation. But you guys gotta know what you're gonna do tomorrow, you can't just, we're still, what's in the morning, so.
I mean, Matt, like we talked about earlier, you had that baseline of what we might, you know, just getting that elementary school up to what we need it to be would be a, a good starting point to know.
Yeah, and this is not directly comparable, but all the incentives are already being integrated. And their referendums basically do what, for some, for their own tree, and they, they're just variable, right? But they're basically putting. Two of their elementary, and they, they're very, right, but they're basically gonna be putting in fifteen, twenty million dollars per building, and they're not getting any more educational space, and you're not, there's really gonna be nothing, I shouldn't say nothing. It's a refresh. You're gonna see the new coat paint, and some new windows and things, but you're really not gonna change, change the educational environment after they spend thirty to forty million dollars on two schools.
But they don't have the high school and art cards anymore.
They do not. But they're fine along, I mean, and they, and they are operating a referendum occurring on the same balance. So that doesn't normalize anything, but it should go to show that the challenges you face are unfortunately not sweet. It's just how we get together and find the right solution that we can all go forward with, and get the community to get behind that solution as well.
I think we could-
I've got some good marching orders, if, I'm happy to take more. I don't listen as well at home, but I'd like to say to you. If there's more things you would like me to work on, I'm happy to.
So we're looking at, and our typical is capacity analysis, probably pulls off, right?
Yeah. I think capacity analysis, cost to fix up what we have, so it's kind of a basic refresh of the current building. Short-term plan for the elementary, that's probably gonna mainly focus on kind of variables of secure entrance. The other stuff's gonna be really hard, as Bob's pointed. Happy to, to take focused looks at individual parts and pieces of that if the board wants. I think it's better growing out of looking at the refresh budgets than it is just picking up the number right now. Uh, if you agree, but the secure entrance will isolate as a variable, and start looking at that right away.
So Bob, were you suggesting, sorry, just-
Race play, let's hear the-
Yep, I have that on my own as well, thank you, Rob. What did they do in terms of how they got to their solution?
Were you suggesting we should put a boiler in the elementary school right now?
In the near future. That, that's one of my biggest concerns, is that we're gonna lose a boiler during the middle of the winter, and we're not gonna have school. So in the near future, you know, it could last another five years, yeah, I, we don't know. But those boilers typically in abandoned schools, they're at their age.
The inconsistency of the current heating now.
Yeah, but that's where your, where it starts.
And you can't just go get a boiler.
No.
So I mean, that's the very, because it's not like you're out of school for a day, because there's one-
That's not true, I think the law generally has one. I ran up the wrong answer.
It's all eggs anymore, not one boiler. It wasn't intended to be funny, but I guess it was kinda funny the way it came out. The point being, I don't think it's not just we're out of school for a day, right? We theoretically have a longer challenge, because we have to order here.
With little kids.
Yeah.
And what's the cost of a boiler?
I'll have to find out, I'll, I'll find out the size.
Just ballpark me, are we talking five hundred thousand, a million, like, what are, ballpark me?
One to a thousand?
Hundred, and then-
require-
And then installation and all that, probably?
That price.
Total?
It's a one boiler.
Is this a boiler that could transfer?
You couldn't, see, that's where, my opinion, that's where it gets tricky, because if you use it for two or three or four years, by the time you build a new school, isn't gonna be work tearing down and movement, but that's something engineers can decide at the time, so, it'd be looked at.
We do it to find the best.
Yeah. We did here, guys, tore one out, put back in.
But you say much for that more, we tore one out, put one back in.
If the school has a boiler plan, we had one up there that we removed up, had to take it apart, and it was a new one up that was worth putting back in. So we did that.
What about the roof?
You can keep repairing it, and I, you know, I, what I keep saying, it's not gonna fail one day, you're gonna say it can't lock in the building. Here's, it's gonna, right now we're seeing it, we're repairing it more and more, just the cost, Mark.
What does a repair cost?
I, for-
No, Robert, Bob, right.
Bob, do you, do you do it, or do you have that tire?
We have, we hire it done. We have to hire it done.
So that's like, when there's a bucket in the hallway for a leak?
That can happen to any buildings right now, terrible time of year. Luckily enough, new roofs, uh, when it happens, and these, these are big buildings, big roofs.
Is there, is it like a, how long does it take to?
Oh, no, so today we had a flash leak at the high school, sorry, but they came out today.
Oh. You had a flash leak at the high school?
I didn't hear about that part.
Neither did I.
So you have it to do with?
I do.
Anything else, Mark? Any further discussion?
No, I just thank everyone for the input, it's good to have conversations about that, and know that there are options available when working together on a solution.
Anything else from the end?
So Matt, can you just sit up front?
At this time then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to statute nineteen fifty-eight five one C to the deployment of motion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government will lobby, ensure, or exercise flexibility. Nineteen fifty-five one M, to the financial, medical, social, or personal safety. Any competition they have, and to ever affect upon the reputation of any person made third to influence the data. One is individual compensation, two administrator review.
I'll make that motion to go to the second session.
There's been a motion by Kate, so there's second. Second by, I'm Rob Pavo, Jan.
Yeah.
myself, and yeah. It'll take a five minutes.